Okay. We'll call the Tuesday, December 19th Select Board Meeting to order. First on the agenda is a couple of warrants. Justin, you-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you, you have warrant number 2412 from December 14th, 2023. On the payroll side of things, we total the amount of $948,000. You'll note there's a couple overtime lines there. Still zero dollars in the snow column, so we'll take it. On the bills payable side of things, a little weightier than typical, just over 2.7 million. There's a reason for that, I'll explain towards the end. A couple highlights, there's $34,000 to remediate the Natsui Way. There's a portion down by the dump of town-owned land that we're obligated to help find a path through for development. I'm sure you're all familiar with it to some degree, so we've had some good progress there. And those are mostly engineering fees. $25,000 for the PBD Street Bridge, so we got some good news on that. The allotment from the state is going to come through in time, but we have started the process and started to pay some of those fees. About a $1,400 for expense for the Winter Festival through the Rec Commission, a successful event once again, so thank you to everybody that's involved. And then the big one towards the bottom, under Treasurer, in the amount of 1.7 million. It's a yearly debt service payment, and that covers both the funds borrowed so far for the municipal complex, as well as the physical, actual purchase of the golf course. So if anybody watching that may have raised an eyebrow, that is what that large expense is. Also included in your packet, you'll see warrant for Facilities Project 30, totaling the amount of $203,880. Based off of feedback we received from the board last time around, I did reach out to the OPM and request that, as we start really leaning into this project and shifting over, or inching towards the building phase anyway, that he provide a breakdown, just so that we all in the room, but the public as well, can kind of get a better handle on how this money's being spent and what it's being spent on. So out of that $200,000 or so chunk, substantial amount is going to contact architecture, who's our architect for the project. We're at about 80% completion for the construction contract drawings, and that's a pretty significant amount of work. It's about 240 sheets of drawings. So that's a lot. PCA 360, who's our owner's project manager, OPM, has been reviewing those drawings through the 90% phase, and they've also been administering the pre-qualification process for subcontractors. So for people watching at home that may not be as familiar with building, it would be like an electrical category, a roofer, plumbing, flooring, things like that. So they had 100 subcontractors who've expressed interest over all of those categories. They've been sorting through that, it's a lot of work. Also, Tervah, who's a commissioning agent for the town, they do kind of testing for, or functional testing for the mechanical system and things like that. So while that's not quite installed, obviously, because we haven't started building, they are reviewing the plans in advance and just providing their input on that. So, you know, it goes quick. That was $200,000, and like I said, as we go through each of these, we'll make sure we highlight and drill down a little bit, just so people know how their money's being spent.
Thank you. Any questions on the warrant? Any board members?
I do not, thank you, Justin.
I'll move that we accept warrant number 2412 and Facilities Project Warrant Number 30.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Justin. Next, Justin's report.
Thank you. So a few notes, I just wanted to take a moment to thank our Middleton first responders for all of their efforts throughout the year. In particular, the past few weeks, they had a couple particularly difficult calls. And I just want to take a moment to make note that, you know, the work they do, I think sometimes it's easy to take for granted. You know, for us, they're our coworkers, and you see them in a different context, but they never really hesitate or think twice when they have to run into a situation that's difficult to deal with. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge their efforts, so thank you. I also wanted to thank the DPW. There's a lot of rain that we saw yesterday. I was joking with Paul Goodwin that there's a possibility he preferred snow, given the amount of flooding that we saw. That also triggered some conversations on the storm water side of things with our conservation agent, as well as the DPW, just trying to address some citizen concerns in a few neighborhoods where they've seen extraordinary amounts of flooding. Now, there's been a lot of water statewide, that's certainly a component, but we're also looking at some newer developments and how that may be impacting previously existing developments. So we're working with engineers. Mr. Chair, you were actually on site in the rain, you know, putting in the OT, but looking firsthand to get an idea and a grasp on why that may be happening. So that is an ongoing conversation, and we just wanted to communicate that to the public. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, or if anyone-
Did you want to? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Edwin Coward, 26 Cabral Drive. My wife Susan's here, we have lived at that house for 25 years. And as you know, the Kuchar Lane development has been, has taken over the Northeast Tennis Land. Prior to that development, breaking ground, we had no flooding on Cabral Drive, DeRosia. Since then, this year, we've had three major floods on Cabral. The runoff coming off the hills from the bear lots, from the developer's site, are destroying landscaping. It's flooding our roads, it's bringing silt into the drains, going into all the wetlands around Cabral. We have two major wetlands. One is in the loop at Cabral Drive, and the one that's on behind my house, when I'm on the outside of the drive. So there are really three concerns here. One is the builders and developers are not doing their job to maintain the stormwater. I know it's been a lot of rain, but this is common now. This is not something that's not going to stop, you know? We did not see this at all during any nor'easter, southeastern hurricane in the last 25 years. This year, it's been three floods, so it's a serious matter. We've had basements flooded, we've had landscape destroyed, we've had wetlands damaged. So there is the runoff problem that needs to be addressed, and the builders and developers need to do that immediately. Silt curtains are not the answer. If you go up there now, you see all the silt curtains down, all the mud's gone over the silt curtains. And I don't know if you've seen the videos, we can see in the videos of cascading waterfalls into people's property, okay? The second issue is, we do not believe the storm drainage system on Kuchar was designed properly. During these last three storms we've had this year, the detention basins have not handled it, and it then overflows and goes into our neighborhood. So those detention basins need to be enlarged, and it needs to be re-engineered. And the third thing is, we need to be serious about the conservation. I mean, we've asked the conservation agent, we've asked people throughout the government here, they need to come and see the silt that's going into the wetlands. And this could become a state problem if we don't watch out. So thank you for, you know, listening, and we would like to really get in front of the planning board to discuss what we see. We would like them to come out and actually see, walk the property, understand where the damage is, they can see where the engineering needs to be improved. And I think there will have to be a new engineering plan done for the storm drainage for this neighborhood. Thank you.
So Justin, could you reach out to the Planning Board chair and ask that they put this on the agenda so that he could speak to them?
Sure.
They meet, I think, the second Wednesday of each month. I don't know if they've already met. Have they already met this month, or?
Last week.
Last week? So Jackie, do you know when the next meeting would be? Probably January, second Wednesday in January would be the next meeting.
And, you know, until that time, I think, you know, department heads need to be looking at this issue so they're prepared to provide any advice and counsel to the planning board. Because, you know, happening once, you know, maybe. Happening, you know, in a pattern, you know, we haven't done, as the government, done something right for it to keep happening, and we gotta do what we can to correct it in this situation, and especially going forward in other developments. Going forward doesn't help you.
Right, I understand, but, you know, the engineering is, was not done properly. That's what I can say, it needs to be re-looked at. The other part of this is, there is a small dam that was used for stream water up in the property for Northeast Tennis. And that's being used as part of the storm management of Kuchar. So they're now pushing water down to our neighborhood through our storm drains, and that's flooding the wetlands behind, some of the people have lower property, and they're getting damaged for that. So it's not just the bad waters happening to our neighborhood just naturally, but it's this new water that's not just runoff, but it's actually being pushed to the storm management system of Kuchar coming down. And I was understanding the planning board would not allow new developments to push their stormwater into other neighborhoods, and that's what's happening here.
If I may? To speak to this development, we've had numerous conversations. We did receive your information today on the most recent one.
Yep.
In my opinion, our conversations don't, we need to get a hold of the departments, planning, conservation, and whether it goes to the commission as well as the department heads. But if that engineer doesn't stand up to the plate to answer some of these questions, why this is becoming a perpetual problem every time it rains. Yes, we had two and a half inches of rain, but it wasn't steady. Two storms ago, that was-
The July storm was the first one we had, and-
But it still shouldn't have brought the rainfall that it did down on Cabral and DeRosia.
Right.
Because that was significant. My opinion, and I don't know about the rest of the board, but if this engineer doesn't speak to our departments within a 10-day period, I would put a cease and desist order on his development until something is answered. Because now this has been, we're talking six months, seven months.
The July rainfall, of course, was enormous, and that was-
And that was an anomaly one, but-
But we've had those before in the neighborhood, again, when Northeast Tennis was there, and we had no problems. None. We've never had a flood.
It handled that.
It handled, yeah. Yeah, because it has the vegetation, it had, you know, it didn't try to push water downhill. It pushed it towards, really, Ipswich, then towards our neighborhood, so, right.
The other thing is that you really have to see it during the rainstorm. It's like trying to see a tidal wave, like if you go there now, you have. I learned a lot by seeing it happening, which even it was described to me, I don't think I would have realized. I could see exactly what's happening. Whoever's going to try and fix this has to go out there in a storm and watch it, in my opinion.
And I do want to thank DPW. I mean, after the July storm, they did a lot of work to fix some of the runoff problems, especially around the trail that goes between DeRosia and Kuchar. And that really, that worked, there worked, but there's a lot more work to be done. Thank you.
You're welcome, I appreciate that, and thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. I'm sure this is the last way you wanted to spend your Tuesday evening. But I would just reiterate, the town has been trying to be responsive. We did reach out to the engineer several times over the summer during the storm that hit North Andover really hard, actually. Assistant Town Administrator Bresnahan and I were driving back from a storm in North Andover and actually drove through your neighborhood so that we could see. We saw 114 was flooding, so we wanted to go and take a look at it. And following that, in September, we did reach out to the engineer and ask them to pen a letter, kind of reattesting their belief in what they had designed. But I think, you know, the most recent thing you saw, the proof is in the pudding. Granted, this time of year, typically, that would probably, would have been a foot or a foot and a half of snow that would have melted steadily over a month or so, and that, you know, that's part of it too. But even with the changing weather conditions that we're seeing regionally, we need to be designing things to address that for now and into the future. Because I agree, it's not fair for the homeowner to have to, you know, you've been there for what, 20 years, to worry about things all of a sudden changing like that, so.
My concern is they're using old charts for weather in engineering, civil engineering, and expecting 1978 weather. We're not having 1978 weather now, we're having the weather we know today. So it's going to continue.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure that we stand by and people are held accountable. And even if, you know, if it's something on the town side, we haven't seen anything to date. We've been trying to do good about doing our due diligence, but even if we have to take ownership, or we find that we have to take ownership, we gladly will. And I just want to make sure, you know, we're not just going to leave you hanging out there, so.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Anything more on your report?
Yes, that one's right at the top, so buckle up, we have a few more. I met with the leadership of the Tri-Town School Union at their central office last week as part of an early budget discussion. We're trying to have conversations early and often with them. And one noteworthy piece that came out of that is they have expressed interest in applying for the MSBA Rapid Repair Program for the roof of this building. You may recall, some time ago recently, they did do a portion of it. There's a second half that they're looking to do now. So the acceptance period for those letters of interest opened on Friday, January 12th upcoming, and we haven't determined a cost on that yet, but I just wanted to make sure people were aware that that might be something else coming down the road, among all the other things. The new 62-38 health insurance split went live during the last pay period. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Assistant Town Administrator Bresnahan, Finance Director Wood, Treasurer Federico, and Assistant Treasurer Alley for all the work that went into planning and implementing that change. And I also wanted to offer a huge thank you to the Select Board for your continued support of our employees. I think they appreciate it, that visible support, so thank you. I joined the Board of Library Trustees at their Monday, December 11th meeting, and thank you for their hospitality. And I look forward to continuing to sit down with them over the next six months as we help them craft a mission statement, kind of develop a path forward for the library. We received word from our State House delegation that House Bill 4204 was signed by Governor Healy last week. That included Section 48, which extended our deadline to use funds for the Route 114 South Main sidewalk relocation into June of 2024. So we have a little wiggle room there, but we don't want to have to rely on it, so we're still going to try to get going with that process. We continue to collaborate with our partners in Boxer and Tops Field to administer the Shared Health Grant, and Tracy Mello and Jackie are currently working out the details for Middleton to take a larger leadership role in that process, so thank you for coordinating that. I have identified a qualified firm that's interested in carrying out the Locust Street appraisal. We've been working on that in the background. A more in-depth update will be provided at your next meeting in January. I'll get an official proposal from them. It's undeveloped land, and it's for a parcel of that size, it's really unique work, so it's difficult to find someone willing to do it, so that was good news. We received news that Middleton will be receiving an additional about $160,000 to boost our Fiscal 24 Chapter 90 funds as part of the apportionment for the Fair Share Amendment that went into place in '22. Following the affirmative vote for additional funding for the Municipal Campus, we received news from Mr. Roger Bourgeois in mid-November that he would be stepping down from his duties on the Building Committee, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize his service on that committee. He definitely did some heavy lifting, getting through the funding phase of things, and it's a lot of work, so thank you to Roger. Thank you to those who joined the Legion Post, Legion Riders, and Patriotic Observances Committee for Saturday's Reefs Across America. Jackie was on hand for that as well, thank you for attending. Over 575 reefs were placed in Oakdale Cemetery, and special thanks to Quarrel and Paul, is it Stesha or Steiger?
Steiger.
Steiger, thank you, for their fundraising and coordination efforts, and also Kevin Welch, our VSO, for his support. I'm turning the page, sorry, this is a deep one tonight, I'm almost there. The Affordable Housing Trust has been meeting since March of 2023, and they'll be working on a public outreach beginning in January on their five-year strategic plan. More information will be available in the new year on the website, as well as hard copy in Memorial Hall, the Council on Aging, and the Flint Public Library, for those of you who would like to participate. And lastly, a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to our staff, volunteer boards and committees, and the people of Middleton.
Thanks. Any questions for?
I just want to add something, and as we're talking about, you know, potential wolf work at this building, as to where Masco stands in its capital planning thing. At last week's, you know, meeting, their Capital Improvement Committee made a presentation where they, the timeline that they showed was in May of '24, it's coming up, they would ask for $5 million for, to hire an OPM and designers for the roof, the HVAC system, and the building management system. And an additional, maybe four and a half million dollars for other, what they term, critical needs. And then in May of '25, ask for any shortfall in funding for the turf fields that hasn't been fundraised. Then in May of '26, ask for an amount of money to reconfigure classrooms that may be necessary from the implementation of the recently adopted strategic plan. And then in the fall of '26, ask for the construction money for the roof HVAC system and building management system. At the same time, they had a presentation from National Grid about total electrification, and which would mean that they would eliminate, you know, natural gas to almost entirely, but that would come at an additional cost. They would still need the, to have some capacity to heat the building for gas if there's a power outage and they don't want all, you know, pipes to freeze. So, you know, they're, they're, they are looking at a lot, and probably, you know, a lot of, four override questions over the next three years. So I don't know how they will be able to convince people to vote for all of them.
And those numbers, it's split by three towns, the numbers you mentioned.
Well, and some of them, you know, don't, don't have, you know, it's too early to have-
Right, no dollar, but the first ones for this year.
But, you know, for like, that's nine and a half, so Middleton's will be about, more, with a little more than a third, so.
Interesting. Any, anything else for Justin? So that Building Committee, do we need to fill that vacancy, or at this point, we don't, we don't really need to, we're so far along?
We are pretty far along into it, and we're going to be shifting into the building phase. The Building Committee has had conversations about selecting one or two members so that every time you have to make a decision, you don't have to come back to a full committee. Just because, for timing purposes, you know, it's just not realistic. So I'd say, you know, it's up to you. Obviously, I don't personally see the need for it necessarily, but-
Okay.
Is it something they feel they can draw from within, you know, the remaining committee members? For, oh, if any of them know if there's somebody they want to pull in? I could ask them, or they could put it on their next agenda and maybe-
Somebody wants to-
Yeah, hear from them if they know if anybody wants to jump in, but I wouldn't say there's any urgency.
And, you know, it's coming in at that point where a lot of the decisions, you know, have been made, it's kind of-
Might not be necessary, yeah.
You know, they'll be, you know, starting off, you know, really behind, you know, trying to understand, so I'm not sure how useful it would be.
Okay. All right, thanks, Justin. We have some donations to accept, we have, oh, any public comment, I'm sorry? No? Okay, sorry about that. So the first one is for the Turkey Trot. I think we have some people here.
Bringing our big checks up. Carol, while you start talking, I'll just split.
So this is our sixth annual Middleton Turkey Trot, so we are excited that we keep growing each year. We had over 754 registrants runners this year, and all of our sponsors were back this year with some more extras, a handful of extras that hopped on. So we were able to raise $19,000 this year, yep, so-
Congratulations.
Each year gets bigger and bigger, which is amazing.
So you guys are seeing some of these?
Yes, these are-
Sitting in the bar rather high.
Trying, trying.
Yeah, so we kept everybody from last year, and we added-
We, no, we already added last year the Middleton Rail Trail.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we added youth sports, Middleton Youth Sports last year, softball, baseball.
Check for them now.
Yes.
We do soccer, softball, and baseball. Oh, Frank wants to go.
I just want to sign the town of Middleton for supporting the food pantry, which in turn helps me help our needy neighbors. This Friday, we're giving out Christmas boxes, and so we'll be giving out 40 to 50 of them. And it, it really shows how many people now are, need the help. We expect to have an extra 10 this year. These people, without their help, I wouldn't be able to do it. As you can imagine, the expense of buying food for the food pantry has increased dramatically. And I also want to thank the town of Middleton for providing the space and the time, the heat, and the administration of our bills. It's a great service to many. Now, as you probably may or may not know, the 25th of December is celebrated by many people as the birth of our Lord. You probably knew that. And so I'm going to give you a little Christmas gift.
You expected this, did you not?
I did, Frank. Thank you.
You're a new boy on town.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want to trade later?
Could be into it. Oh, sure, thank you.
I want to make sure you get them.
They just keep coming. Thank you.
I want to also tell you something else. One of the most important, wonderful persons that I ever met was on the 25th of December. Can you guess who that is?
Santa.
Me. No, I bet you didn't know that, did you, darling?
I didn't, Frank, I did not.
If you want to sing it.
Happy birthday to you.
I certainly think what-
I think you've gotten a pretty generous birthday gift from our friends at the Turkey Trot as well.
Certainly is, and I certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Frank.
I've got a smile to eat though. Here, son.
So you guys voted us in?
Yeah, if we go over the individual amounts, just for the public or the people watching?
Food pantry gets $5,326. And then the Middleton Sports gets $500 for each, which is based on softball and soccer. And then we have the Veteran Services, $3,000. Friends of the Flint Library, $3,000. Middleton PTO, $1,500. And Middleton Council on Aging, $3,000.
Wow.
But the rail trail.
Thank you.
Was it the rail trail?
Rail trail was 300, and then also the PTO got another 300 early in the year because they had a fund run raised, and we wanted to be on their shirt.
Mr. Chair, you only need to take a motion on the food pantry, the COA, and the VSO, out of those groups.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept those three? In second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, well, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
You also have a $1,000 donation to the food pantry from the Rory Foundation. Is anybody here to represent them? No? Okay, is there a motion to accept that?
And I'll move to accept with thanks.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And $1,000 to the food pantry again from Circle Furniture. Is anybody from Circle Furniture here? No? Okay.
Move to accept this $1,000 with thanks also.
I'll second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Gillian, and Loretta, and Annie from the Friends of the Library are all here to accept their donations too, before you move on, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sure. Come on up, and you can hand them the checks.
Picture with the board and all the people?
No, come on up.
You guys want to stand up to him and be in the picture? And I'll go over there and take it?
Or delve over there?
They're going to come to you.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
All right, we have a whole bunch of people here to take, receive the checks, so. Frank? Frank, you come on up.
Frank, you come back up.
And youth sports, we got Mike Lovett here, who is part of the baseball. You're going to help out, you do PTO? All right, come on up, come on up, we're going to get- We're going to get.
Come right up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it in the circle. We have circle. Veterans, we'll have.
I'm very fond of Jennifer.
Absolutely, Frank, of course we know.
Do you kind of want to hold veterans with it?
Sure. I think she wants to squeeze this man.
And then food pantry is Frank.
You can see him right in front of us here. Yeah, right in front. There you go, yep, excellent.
Oh, you're taking it, good.
Yeah, no, you guys get into it. You guys back up, go with them.
Oh, yeah, my husband would not be standing. All right, for our website.
All right, Debbie, you're going to need to be a little bit taller, my friend. Justin and Costa, can you slide in a little?
That way you don't have to stand to it.
Okay. Ready? Here we go. Debbie, I need you to go in front of Rick. Just stand right in front of him, because he's tall enough, so I can see your face. There you go.
Should we bend lower?
No, you're good.
I got everybody. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Debbie.
Tradition, right? Tradition.
Jillian's are still rolling, isn't she?
Maybe we'll take a couple combinations outside. I'll get pictures of them with the veterans, too, because they always come in January.
Thanks, coming, Frank.
Okay, don't go anywhere, Jillian, you're up next. We have an update from Jillian Smith of the Council on Aging.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. I'm excited to share with you some, what's been happening on 38 Maple Street. First, I want to say thank you to all of you for your support for the COA, and I've been charged with handing out these cards from my team members. They wanted to say thank you all for the recognition event that you held for the Middleton employees this summer. A lot of the staff at the COA are longtime Middleton residents, and have been with the COA anywhere from five to 20 years. The event was very meaningful to them. It was a great opportunity to meet other town employees. You'll often see the vest being sported at the center, but more importantly, that recognition really meant a lot to the team. So, on behalf of the COA employees, thank you, and I just want to.
Thank you.
And then I also want to say thank you, on behalf of the COA and the seniors we serve to the community. As you see, there are amazing people in this community who help support our mission, whether it be through donations, or volunteering, or even just encouraging seniors to come and participate. It's always a great feeling when we have someone come in and say, you know, my daughter, my daughter-in-law, my son, my neighbor told me I should be coming down here, and now I'm here, and I don't know why it took me so long. And then, you know, a few months go by, and they're sharing their talents as a program with the COA. It's just a wonderful opportunity for us to develop those relationships, and then, ideally, when needs for services arise, we have that relationship to be able to provide that support and those resources. So, it may seem like a small thing, but it's really not. And then I also want to thank all of our volunteers for helping to supplement our programs and supplement our staff, so that we can continue to grow without having to necessarily ask for more. In the spirit of growing, I just wanted to share some numbers, because I know you're all number people, you like the numbers. In FY '22, our participation was 1,901 unduplicated number of folks that was data captured. For guests, we saw 4,544. In FY '23, our captured data had 1,344 unduplicated participants with 5,174 guests. And just to clarify, guests are folks for programs like the food pantry, or support groups where we do not capture names, because it's a sensitive program, or programs that we do collaboratively with other departments, where that information's not shared, but the numbers are shared because we were a part of the process in making those programs As you can imagine, we continue to max out in our beautiful parking lot. So our shuttle services have increased, thanks to Town Hall. We use their parking lot to shuttle for people who are capable of driving, and then we also are providing shuttles from home, just so that we can keep those numbers growing without that barrier of our parking lot. One more group of numbers for you. In FY '22, we had 901 programs, and FY '23, we had 1,589 programs. So, we continue to utilize that space as modest as it is. We're having lots of fun, it's pumping over there. Jackie, Justin can tell us.
I can attest to the fun.
Yeah, it's a good time. So, our parking lot, you know, I mean, everybody knows it is what it is, but it, we've just had the added pleasure of, while working on our capital project of repairing our ADA entrance, of having a few less spots, because the workers are working out of their vehicles. They've been there since November 9th, and they're continuing to plug away, but I just want to thank Wait Construction, because they have been very flexible. When we've had big programs, we've asked them not to be there. They've accommodated us. It hasn't interrupted any of our programming, we've continued running the schedule as usual. They're working around us, very polite, so I just, that is moving along, I knew you'd all want to know that, and, but they're being very great to us. And lastly, we're anxiously awaiting and excited for our new space. I'd like to thank you and the town of Middleton for your continued support for this program. We're looking forward to filling this space and continuing to grow our programs and offerings. When I came to Middleton, I learned from the seniors about the Middleton Way, and I believe this community center is an excellent way for Middleton to grow and maintain the Middleton Way of community and togetherness. Thank you for allowing me to be on this journey, and happy holidays. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from anybody? That's great work that you do. Great work.
I just have a comment. Thank you, Jillian, for everything you do. The other staff members there, too, you run a great program over there, and I hear grave reviews twice a day.
There are some really amazing people in this community, and I get to hang out with them every day. So I'm really the lucky one, but, but I'll say, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. So we, we're going to go over the corridor improvement study review for 49 South Main and 10th 18 Boston Street project. And Alars is here.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so you have three documents in your packet labeled 5A, 5B, and 5C, so it's the newest document, and then working its way back. The original, as part of earlier discussions with the select board, the original document came in, in late October, and then there's been some back and forth between Jeff Dirk, who's at Vanessan Associates, Inc., representing Vilbridge Middleton, and Mr. Unyam, and then Sam Gregorio on the TEC side of things, representing the town in the form of peer review. So collectively, as a group, we made an effort to go back and forth and try to come to a consensus in advance, just to make sure there wasn't any loose ends, or misunderstandings, or anything along those lines. So, I appreciate the partnership and the willingness to communicate as we make our way through this process. I know you've all had a chance to, to read these. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or if you want to just dive right into them, or, Alars, I don't know if you'd like to add anything?
Nothing to add, no. I mean, again, I agree, it's been very helpful to have Jeff and Sam in particular get a chance to talk and compare notes, and talk through the, the moving parts of, of the scope that we've put together, so I think it's been productive.
So, I guess as part of this is, we were working on a development agreement, and as part of that, we were asking for some land in the future, possibly widen Route 114. And then I think the question came, would it be, would we take ownership of the land or have an easement? And you were going to look into that a little bit further. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, to begin with, which way it would be if, if it were to happen?
Mm-hmm, the, we've had a little back and forth on that, and I think we're still kind of ironing out the details about the best way to go about it, just to make sure, you know, everybody's as protected as possible. But you did hit the nail on the head, this is something that was laid out as part of the development agreement. I think on the town side of things, we just wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence, and then also trying to do a better job of sorting through some of these different traffic issues in terms of what's, you know, directly, or, or, you know, somewhat adjacently related to the project, and then the other basket being the whole other, you know, mess of Middleton traffic issues, and, and how to parse out who's responsible for what. And the intent of this document, and I think it accomplishes it, is it highlights, it highlights those points between those two different baskets, but I think it also demonstrates some opportunities for the town to potentially use this as a springboard for resolving or mitigating some larger issues by addressing some of the smaller issues that are directly adjacent to, to this project. And I don't know if you all had any thoughts in terms of a preference on, if you were to offer it up, that, that land for a lane? I know we had talked about certain things that you would like to see, just to ensure that your interests are protected. I don't know if you'd like to highlight those?
Yeah. Hi, Lars Unyam from Vilbridge Acquisitions. We're pretty open to doing whichever mechanically, the technical way to accomplish it, but I think the, the outcome is the same. Like Justin said, I think one of the things we're all trying to figure out is just, if we do X, what does that mean in terms of complying with zoning and everything else? And that's the part where we're just, need to really dig into, frankly, case law and lots of other things, just to make sure we have our, our i's dotted and t's crossed. But we don't really have a preference, I think it really is just more just trying to get it accomplished in a way that works, and, and, you know, gets the benefit delivered without any issue.
You know, I think, you know, what this, these series of documents have shown is that if nothing happens on that site, that intersection will continue to get worse, because of the development that happens in other parts of town, and in towns that are on 114 or 62. And the only hope of mitigating that continued deterioration is to increase the capacity of that intersection, and do some other ancillary things that would make traffic flow smoother. And agreeing to give up land, and the actual widening of the road, and implementation of these other, you know, measures, isn't going to happen overnight, you know? DOT will have a major say in how and when things, you know, are done. So, you know, there is going, doing, you know, nothing makes things worse going forward with this development, and getting land, you know, from it will eventually mitigate the deterioration of the site, but it's not going to be, happen, you know, instantaneously. You know, you build, you're building, and it might be several years before DOT, you know, manages, you know, with us pushing them, you know, to make the, the improvement. So, it, it's a hard thing, I think, you know, for people to understand that by doing this, eventually it'll get better, but it's not going to be overnight.
Agreed.
And then I would just add, one component that did come up was that should Mr. Unyam donate or contribute this strip of land for the purpose of this lane, then the question comes, well, how, how do we end up funding the actual physical infrastructure and actually building that out? And so, our teams with our engineers have been working to identify different grant opportunities, the Mass Works program in particular, that would, I believe, pay up to $2.5 million for infrastructure improvements that would address that entire intersection. I do have prior experience going through that process twice over, so, and conversations that we've had with some other, you know, third parties, they felt that, that we have really good odds, you know, if we, if we put the work in and go through the process of securing some funds for that purpose. That would be more of a one to two-year timeline, if we were to get it. If not, you can always fall back on the tip. That can be a three to five-year process, it's a little less attractive. If it's something that's a little more time-sensitive, part of the conversation was, well, if, if we can't fund it through grants, which I think we have a, a pretty good shot of doing, but if we can't fund it through grants, then who ends up paying for it? And it's important, I think, to highlight in the conversations that we've had, the value of the land that would be donated, which I forget the exact number, you had land, you know, back in the envelope, but.
I don't know for sure, it was like 350 or 370, something like that.
Yeah, somewhere around 350,000, and, you know, the value of the study and other things, so the, you know, the infrastructure component, that may be something that's our half of our contribution, if we can't do grants. But it's something that we'd have to figure out down the road, in terms of who would actually own what portion. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that?
And how many feet of, of land are we talking?
The width of it. Do you recall the square feet, roughly?
Yeah, well, so.
Well, the width wasn't square.
The width, so along South Main Street, it's approximately 24 feet off of the existing property line, and along Boston Street, it's approximately 12 feet. So on South Main Street, because the previous discussions that we had with you, the, with you as in the board, large, the, the request was that we try to make all the adjustments necessary to happen on the west side of South Main, so it wouldn't affect the curb lines, the cemetery, all that stuff. And so, to accomplish everything, that means bringing a bike lane, a double-wide bike lane, so a 10-foot wide bike lane, as well as a new lane for vehicle traffic into our site. And then on South Boston, it's, the geometry works out a little bit better. Same thing, we end up with a 10-foot bike lane, but it, it, there's less of a, a need, because basically the existing right-of-way, less of it's developed proportionately, so there's less of a need for as much of a space.
I think overall, it was about .4 acres, or something along those lines.
.3, .3, a little over 13,000 square feet in total.
So not an insignificant amount of land. And then the, the other component that I think we're still trying to really nail down, and you had made reference to it, but just to reiterate it, is the setback component. So if, you know, the, from where he has to build the building to the road as it is today, versus if he donates a, a whole lane width, is, is that going to negatively impact what you intend to do for the project? So, it's something obviously that's outside of the purview of this board, but just something that publicly, you know, we wanted to make reference to.
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable. I mean, even if it were taken by eminent domain, we actually have that in our bylaws that you would get protection, just like that. So the next step is for us to draft, we don't have a draft agreement, right, or do we?
Not at this time, and, and so I'd say, if the board is satisfied with the work that the various teams have put in, in terms of the traffic corridor study piece, then it would be potentially, I mean, to authorize me or our staff to enter at least into a process, to start exchanging drafts, and maybe bring a complete document forward to the board for their review, you know, sometime in, you know, January, if that, you know, depending on what the timeline is. Next couple months, we'll say.
So what, so all that we're asking for is that the land donation, nothing else to do with the project as far as for our.
Right, right.
So, did you, do you have a thought on that, Rick?
I mean, I don't know if we can get in my head of myself here, but in looking at what I would call the, you know, the hardware, when it comes to control, traffic control devices, so, is a lot of detail and, and reading in that. But one thing I noticed was, we're going to require a significant increase in the technology of those, of those units that, you know, above what we have today. Like, because what we have today, from what I understand, can't really be tweaked anymore than, than we're at right now. So the better that, you're going to bring in an entirely new hardware, that is, I don't know if it was Simtech, or if I forget, something that is, you know, more variable and can literally monitor the traffic.
That can read the traffic and respond.
What it looked like. Who pays for that?
So that hopefully would be paid for through a Mass Works grant, through the tip, or ultimately by the state, it's a state-owned intersection.
It's Mass DOT, so it would be their dime.
It should be their responsibility, and it's noted, as is in its current condition, it will only get worse, that it's a high-crash intersection, so some improvements have to be made there, as it is. Ultimately, I think the collective hope is, is that, that we wouldn't be paying for it. I think the hope is also for Mr. Unyam. I think the hope is also for Mr. Anyam that he wouldn't be paying for it and that we can find some avenue for the state to take care of it. At the end of the day, ultimately though, you know, just to be upfront, there may come a time where we have to make a decision about if that doesn't work out, does the town have to pay a portion of that or find some way to fund that? But that's down the road.
To what that would be, okay, yeah. And then in regards to widening, so we're just talking Boston Street eastbound and South Main eastbound.
South Main northbound, yep.
South Main northbound, okay.
The, it's to enable a dedicated left turn lane, so it's really to support the westbound motion.
Oh, facing north, I gotcha, right.
But the cars are driving north and then turning west.
Yep. And based on what, you know, the study that's been done and peer reviewed by our side, you know, is, are there other areas in that? Is there other ways we can widen other areas of that? I mean, granted, you know, the graveyard side, not so much perhaps, but are we willing to or is it going to be part of the scope that we look at not just, you know, your property, but other properties in that, in that area?
So at certain points in this back and forth over the past couple of months, about midway through, we did start talking a little bit about the post office on the other side, but we've since determined that there's a way to shift the lanes, that you wouldn't necessarily need that, right? Is that correct?
For the, what's called the critical plan. So we were able to come up with an alignment of the roads where we could achieve the objective of making a project that only relies on the land that I control and doesn't need anyone else's land to be taken or donated in order to support realigning and widening the actual intersection. There's also in the study, we did do a long-term improvement plan that is a more substantial, leads to a more substantial widening of 114 both directions. And that implies definitely more takings that would need to happen, north and south. So we did do that plan because we needed, as part of the scope, to provide these two plans, something we could do right now, quote unquote, even if it's five years, that's the right now. But enables that longer-term plan. And then as part of what we're talking about with the land area to donate or to have taken, we're using the limits of what would be there to support the long-term plan. So even though we're building a short-term plan, we're going to provide all the land now for the long-term plan. So at least for us, it's not an issue again. And then if there needs to be discussions with other property owners, they can have it at a later time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And the impact of signing, you know, a development agreement is that this board, you know, thinks that the obtaining the land for the widening isn't the best, you know, interest of the town. It does not alter the responsibility of the Board of Appeal in reviewing and approving that plan. It's just like us going to their meeting and saying, we think, you know, getting land is a good idea.
Correct.
That's the extent of what we are committing to.
A member of the public wanted to speak. Go ahead, yeah.
Fred Feldman, 27, Rowell Lane. I guess I would, Lars may have the answer to this. I know at the zoning board meeting at the last week, because of the drainage, you had said they had to add an infiltration chamber that would go underneath where Angelica's building is now. So I'm wondering if, since this study has been done, if that infiltrate, that large infiltration chamber was taken into account and if this widening of the road would interfere with where that infiltration chamber was, because that might impact where the commercial building would be. Has this design, was this design done prior to the infiltration chamber being considered?
I don't know the timing of the two, but I can tell you there's not a conflict between the two. So we're able to provide the land to support the road widening and it won't conflict.
Because the infiltration chamber was where Angel, underneath where Angelica's was, so my concern is widening the road might interfere with the infiltration chamber is, which might interfere with if you're moving the building with the whole plan, is what I'm saying. And I'm not trying to be adversarial, I'm just saying the whole thing might have been done prior to the infiltration chamber, which might impact the whole design of the roadway.
We would move the infiltration chamber if needed in order to accommodate the road widening.
Okay, which would impact where the commercial buildings would be? Because you can't put an infiltration chamber over, the building over the infiltration chamber.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, okay. And just, I would be remiss if I didn't also mention the fact that, piggybacking on what the other gentleman said about the water issues, I can't emphasize enough the water table issues in Rowell Lane and that the hidden water table, when they're building the houses, they did when they built our condos, and the necessity in really being careful in the construction of the property and the septic system and the 9,000 gallon a day amount of water that's going to be going into the septic, the runoff, and how that's going to impact us in the runoff from, you know, the church and everything else. We're at a very critical point right now and any impact of any development in Angelica's as well as the other impact of the water is going to impact us now. You know, we're having issues now for the last year and a half and it really has to be looked at very carefully. And again, not in a negative way, but we don't want to be duplicating these other people that are coming back now in another year saying, we have to revisit this because we've got issues. So I appreciate all the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we wouldn't be a vote now because we don't have a document?
No, I guess maybe if you could just vote to authorize me to negotiate a development agreement to bring back to you at a future meeting for approval.
Which would basically say that we think the value of getting that land to eventually widen the road is a, is a more of a benefit than a detriment to have the project, I guess is what, what it would, is what everybody's understanding is.
Correct. That was effectively the determination of the study and also, you know, agreed by our peer review, is that ultimately if nothing ever went in there, the traffic conditions are going to continue to worsen at that intersection if nothing ever goes in there ever again. Now that said, even if this doesn't go in, eventually something's, something's going to go there. And so without, someone go there without the guarantee of getting that additional space to put in a lane and kind of take a moonshot here and try to grab this thing by the horns. And the other thing that I'd want to underline as well is that, and this is overall for all of the efforts that we're going to be doing to try to address the traffic issues over the next, you know, five or more years, is that, you know, even with our best efforts, we're going to try to get this thing to plateau. I don't think it's ever going to reverse back to like it was in the 90s. You know, talking to some people.
They come up with flying cars.
Yeah, exactly. You can't go back.
Heard they're coming.
We're just trying to slow it down because it will continue to just escalate and get worse. So just to set expectations for people.
You know, if, you know, that intersection was widened, I know in many communities that had, you know, intersections with a lot of volume, you know, they've gone to small rotaries. Has that been looked at? If that was done at this intersection, would that be, end up with a better situation in terms of traffic flow instead of signal, working with signalization and additional lanes?
Honestly, I don't know if that's been part of the conversation. And you all would know better than me, but I don't know what the appetite in town would be for a rotary.
I mean, I.
Right there.
I don't like rotaries.
I'm looking at all of you and you're like, ah.
But we were talking about that cemetery. It won't be there.
Yeah.
So, it'll be wiped out.
Well, I did, it was, I did see rotary mentioned, but they were talking in terms of 62, Boston Street, 62 to Elm Street, but which is a.
It's to do with this project.
But in the expansive, you know, in the overview of the entire thing, I did see that there. If I can, Mr. Williams' question, I probably, forgive me, I think I've asked this and you answered it for me before, but, you know, in the event of, you know, land, you know, providing land for widening, does that have any impact on what you filed already, you know, as far as, you know, what you need for your, you know, to get the construction in? Does that change anything that you filed already in regards to the 40B or anything else you've done?
Sure. It does slightly. There's a little bit of a tail of the widening, limits of the widening that would come across the frontage of the 40B proposal. That's where the road's starting to curve up, so it's not tremendously negatively impactful, but it does certainly reduce the depth from the property line to the edge of the building as proposed, which also we have now a farmer's porch on that portion of the building. So it does make the dimensions less than what is asked of by zoning, which of course we can request a waive out of, the zoning board's not required to grant it, but we can request a waive for having a lesser dimension. So that would be the impact. But otherwise, no, there's, by the time we get to that property frontage, the impact is pretty diminutive. I believe it's only around 1,600 square feet or so across the entire frontage of that parcel.
I think I'd asked that before, but yeah, thank you.
I think a member of the public, you, yeah, go ahead.
Hi. I wanted to ask, I'm Simon Ward, I live on Rowell Lane also. Wanted to ask a question. So if I understand what you said, what you're offering is 24 feet of Angelica's property between Boston Street and Rowell Lane to make an additional lane on 114 that's going to turn left onto Boston?
Correct.
So the traffic heading towards Andover would have three lanes, currently has two.
Yep.
And it expands to two right at Rowell Lane. And the traffic heading towards Peabody would stay at two, but it also shrinks down to one right at Rowell Lane.
Correct.
Okay.
If you'd like, I have a copy of the plan.
Will it be online later?
It's online as well, yes, but it shows, so basically that's what we're describing, where there's the long-term plan, where there might be, the lane widening occurs at the intersection and keeps going south for a while. But the other plan that we have, which is called the Critical Improvement Plan, it widens at the intersection and tapers back down. So by the time it gets to Rowell Lane, it's back to what is there today. So it's really kind of a, the throat opens when it gets to the intersection and then closes back down again. That's how it's done.
It only opens very shortly until you get to Maple Street and then it closes down again.
Correct, correct.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
May I ask a point of information? Is the plan, Lars, you're talking about the one that you submitted to the select board for their packet?
Yes, there's, there's two plans that were originally submitted with Jeff's original report. There was the long-term plan and the Critical Improvement Plan. In the most recent response to peer review comments, Jeff provided a updated Critical Improvement Plan because in working with his team, they were able to make some additional adjustments to the alignment so that there was no need for a taking from the post office parcel. And that way we could do something where we.
I just wanted to make sure it's in the packet.
Yes.
Tonight, because then I can say, we have the select board meeting packets posted on our website. It's in the packet for tonight as a PDF. But thank you.
Yep, okay.
Just wanted to make that connection.
Sure, thank you.
So, and along those lines too, so Paul Goodwin, he's been working with Mass DOT to get a left turn delay heading north of 114 to take a left onto Boston Street. Is there anything that this board can do or could we reach out to our state reps to move that along to, what would be the best avenue? It seems a little stalled. We really want, it has nothing to do with this project, this is something we want as soon as possible.
Yeah, we're trying to address that separately, but it's a slow process. So I'll ask Paul if he's had any communication with them recently.
Do you think if you reached out maybe to our state rep or we reached out, that would help or it's Mass DOT or?
Let me start with Paul.
Okay.
And then I'll shoot all an email.
Okay.
At some point this week, just giving you an update on it.
It seems like it's kind of stalled and it's something.
Yeah.
It's typical.
I think we're all in favor of.
Very typical.
I was going to say, it is, it's slow-going. It's not, it's not unusual to be this slow, but I'll see where they're at.
Okay.
Well, and I know he's busy with the separate, but with the 105 South Main Street, there's all sorts of permitting and everything going on now for that, that he's working on, you know, with, through the state.
He has a new point of contact, I think, too. I think our district rep got promoted, so it's worth asking him.
So, I don't know if you know that, Lars, but that's something that we've been working on regardless of your project. So when you're planning your project, it might be, hopefully that, that will be there.
Yeah, I didn't know that, so yeah, that's great to know.
That's something that we've been trying to get.
So I think at this point, I move to authorize a town administrator to develop a draft, develop an agreement, you know, for our review.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion on it at all? No?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank, thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Working with us on that.
Thank you.
Of course, of course. Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
You too.
Well, Lars, we'll touch base to set up a date to start shooting things back and forth on that.
Okay, sounds great.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a vote of change of manager and of officer director and transfer of stock for Middleton Shereesh Inc., DBA Richdale, that's the Richdale next to Richardson's Ice Cream, I believe.
So, good evening, Jill Manher, on behalf of Middleton Shereesh. J isn't pronounced, took me a long time to figure that out. Here with me tonight is Chandrika Patel. She is the new manager and one of the new owners of that particular enterprise. So this is the Richdale located in, you know, the Yankee, Charlie's, I can't remember the one's name, that, that particular mall. Back, there was a home rule petition. We ended up getting a license to be able to serve beer and wine at that particular location. Since that time, the manager, Shereesh Patel, has sold his interest to Chandrika and then also a portion of that interest was actually distributed to the other existing shareholder who's Shereesh. So basically whenever there's a change, you have to do obviously a transfer of ownership. So your package includes a transfer of ownership, a transfer of manager, a transfer of the officers, and that includes the directors. So you're, you have a multi, a multi-amendment application before you. Pursuant to the rules, you know, we have included a detail about where Chandrika worked before and those two places that she worked, she was the manager, and both of those institutions actually did have the service of alcohol as well. So I believe that, you know, she actually has a quarry in there and she has her TIPS certification and then you see all of her naturalization papers relative to the requirement. If you have any questions for either myself or for Chandrika, please, we'd love to answer them for you.
Any questions for Mandy?
I would just like to, would you mind telling us a little bit about yourself? Like, how long have you worked at the location or, just give us a little history on you?
I'm sorry, what was that?
She hasn't, so are you asking about the prior establishment or this one? You worked at the, how long have you done something there?
Right.
Yes, working two, two something.
You've been working in Middleton for a couple of years?
Yeah, a couple of years, yes.
Okay.
So I think, I think a lot of times that they're all family-owned businesses and they kind of share the burden.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from Mandy? Anybody? I don't have anything.
So I'll move to approve the change of manager and change of officer director and transfer of stock for Middleton Shereesh Inc. DBA Richdale.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Merry Christmas. I'm going to North Reading right now. Thank you very much. Take care, have a good one.
You want me to text them, make sure they're on time?
It's Danielle McKnight.
They should, you should be fine.
Okay, next we have.
Thanks, Jill.
Appoint Connor Gavin as a shared health inspector.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to hand this one over to Assistant President Hand.
So as many of you will recall, we have our shared public health excellence program and in the last year, we had agreed to take on the hiring of the shared health inspector as part of that program. Justin did mention earlier tonight that Tracy and I have been working with our partners in Boxford and Topsfield. Middleton will likely be taking more of a leadership role in the coming year with managing the program. But one of the things that we were happy to take over sooner was going through the hiring process for this shared inspector. So we actually brought this individual on in October, so his appointment date should be effective October 25th, 2023. It was my lapse that I didn't get him on your agenda, but we were thrilled to have him. We've been seeking for this position. We've been seeking for this position for most of this year. He is a recent graduate of the University of Massachusetts Lowell Program in Public Health with a concentration in community health, and Tracy has already begun training him. She's very excited, as are the health directors and/or agents in the other two communities. I know he's been spending some time with Tracy, some of the other local area health directors and food inspectors in Beverly, Topsfield, Boxford, here in Middleton, and I think Danvers as well. So we thank our partners in those other communities who have very seasoned professionals doing this to assist us with training, but Tracy and I both fully recommend this person to the board, and they would be, they're 30 hours a week supporting all three communities in food inspeckional services.
And does, do we pay him and then the other towns reimburse, or does each town pay him? So does, does he get one paycheck or three?
He is our employee. We own him, he gets a Middleton paycheck, he is a Middleton employee, and per the terms of the Shared Public Health Excellence Grant, which we expect to carry on for a number of years receiving funding, but when that grant does dry up, maybe in, you know, seven to 10 years, we will have to backfill this role, because this is part of the state's wider initiative to increase public health services. It is a needed position in Middleton, as you can imagine, with how many common vic shooters you're approving. Our food volume is very high, so having somebody 30 hours a week between Middleton, Boxford, and Topsfield is really, it's needed at this point with the volume of inspeckional services.
So is this paid for through a grant, or we, how, where does the money come?
He's paid through the grant, so he's our employee, and so right now, we're in the first grant cycle, and so everything, cost of this employee is covered through the grant, health insurance, everything. And then, as we talked about, I think the board initially talked about it actually before I got here, and then the Public Health Excellence Grant, for as long as the grant exists, it pays for 100% of the costs, but at some point in the next seven to 10 years, the grant may start reducing the amount and we start to take on the burden, but that's a many-year out.
Ten years.
Yeah, a good 10 years out is what the expectation is from the state. But we're thankful, it's a, it's a necessary program, and we do need, we do need this volume capacity. When you see Tracy's performance measures with her budget submission this year, I think you're gonna be surprised at the volume of the public health work that we need support in.
How is it decided when he works here and when he works in Topsfield and when he works in Boxford?
That's a great question, Jeff. So we have an IMA between the three communities for all of these positions, and so this particular person reports to Tracy for, like, hiring HR purposes, but we share, you know, so Middleton has a little bit more food inspection, so he's a little bit heavier with us, but then he covers Boxford and Topsfield, so it depends, you know, everyone's inspeckional cycle's a little bit different, but he has to do, you know, every food building establishment has two inspections a year, so his job is really to just go and schedule in all of the communities. So his job is to hit all of the necessary businesses that are on his list, but it's not like where he does 10 hours Middleton, four hours, four hours, or anything like that. It's not quite so prescribed.
Can he do, can he do perk test inspections too?
Not yet, but the goal is, is that the shared, it's why it's a shared inspector, is that he'll get more certifications as he goes. Similar to municipal finance, there is a real hiring crisis right now in the Commonwealth for people with all of the necessary qualifications for public health, so we're very excited to have this person.
I think it's great, yeah, don't get me wrong, it's great.
Yeah, but similar, so this, so Connor's in the same category of employees, the board may remember Julia LaBelle, our shared public health nurse who's been helping with flu clinics. So Connor functions very similarly, where it creates a shared service model between the three towns.
Great, great idea, especially through a grant, how can you, not like that.
Yeah, hard to turn it down.
Yeah, hard to turn down. Okay, is there a motion?
So I'll move to appoint Connor Galvin as a shared health inspector from 10:25:23 to 6:30:26.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. So we're gonna review the town meeting and budget calendar? I think we have a copy of it in our packet.
We do.
Anybody have any comments on that? It's pretty straightforward, I think, right? Anything of note, Justin?
Page 104, Deb.
So, yeah, just to highlight a couple of things. For me, it's super useful, being my first cycle through in town.
Pretty sure-
To have it laid out in this manner, a couple notes just to highlight, May 14th, 2024, for the annual town meeting, May 21st, 2024, for the annual town election, so mark your calendars. We have already distributed the fiscal '25 budget instructions to department heads, and we're starting to have those early conversations, as well as with our partners over at the schools. I'll also point out, on Saturday, February 3rd, is the Operating Budget Summit here at the Fuller Meadow School.
Excuse me.
And Saturday, March 2nd, is the Capital Budget Summit, also my 36th birthday, so I'm gonna be celebrating in style with all of you. And Thursday, May 9th, there'll be a pre-town meeting at the Flint Public Library, just for me and our team to run through any articles that may be on the warrant in advance of the annual town meeting, which once again is on Tuesday, May 14th, 2024.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions on the schedule? I'll start with that, okay.
I'm not, well, are you, sorry, I'm not seeing where the schools are, how am I missing it?
Boy, he, it's not broken down like-
No, they usually come to all of them, right? Both of them.
I'm almost there, Rick.
I'm sorry.
No.
Page 104 in the PDF.
Right.
February, was it 2nd?
Oh, I see Fuller Meadow.
February 3rd, yeah.
Yes, so they're-
Yes, it's Fuller Meadow on February 3rd.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you.
And a thank you to Jackie, by the way, for running through and updating these dates.
Rick, are you looking for like the day's breakout? Because that'll be closer to the 3rd.
Oh, yeah, looking for like word Masco, word-
Yeah, yeah, that'll be closer to.
Thank you.
Okay, I think there's an update on the Fuller Meadow parking plans, future plans?
Yes, so a couple items, one for the immediate, one for kind of midterm, and then one long-term. So for the immediate, there's a slightly colorized overhead of the golf course, so right now, the Fuller Meadow School is using the golf course parking lot for staging. However, we will be breaking ground there, hopefully in the early spring, and we had to coordinate a little bit with the contractor to carve out space to ensure that the schools can still use that parking lot to get them through the spring semester. So if you're looking on the existing entrance and exit, it's going to be split with the right side being for construction vehicles, and the whole pink area will be a lay-down area and for construction. And then on the left side, parents would drive in until they hit that blue line, which is going to be a fence, follow that green line that runs along the blue fence all the way up to a turnaround, queue all the way back down, and then kind of like returning your car at the airport, a rental car, four lanes stacked, that once they're ready to be deployed onto 114, will roll out onto 114. The contractor was all right with that, it was a little bit of a negotiation back and forth. Initially, they said absolutely not, because it's a bit of a headache.
That's what we said.
Yeah, yeah, so, but after a little insistence from our office, they acquiesced, so there's a small additional expense for the fencing, about $4,000. I had a conversation with Superintendent Morrison, he's going to bring it back and discuss with his board, so it's still pending the official vote, but they are agreeable to picking up that cost.
And what, what's, why the necessity for the fence?
The contractor's just concerned about a parent driving into the area where there's heavy equipment, liability.
Liability, kids getting out of buses into cars and vice versa.
There won't be any children going to the site, I just want to make sure we're-
Yeah, no one, no one should be leaving their cars there, but still, people wandering.
If a parent's there and they have a kid in a car-
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Or just like, you know, someone pulling off the road that's not a parent, that has no clue what's going on there, and just starts driving through to the back of the site, and, you know, clips a cat.
Right.
It'd be, it'd be a little problematic.
Was the anticipated date, start date for something like this?
So the parking, we're actually, I had a conversation with Scott today, or Superintendent Morrison, and requested that they start this at the beginning of the second semester, even without the construction vehicles there, so that they get in the habit of doing this without dealing with all the heavy equipment and, you know, doing that. And then the fence and all the construction and everything, they'll probably start rolling that out around February, start moving dirt around March. There's not gonna be a ton of time where they're actually overlapping.
So who will handle this snow removal and ice treatment of this, this particular corner of-
Excellent question, the contractor on the site, they're also going to stripe it out as well.
And they'll handle the, the snow removal and ice removal on that section?
Yep, the whole thing. They're, they'll take care of it, because they'll already be on site, and they actually had, have already softly volunteered that the clerk of the works that's going to be on site for the project will help during that, I think it's between 1 o'clock and 3 o'clock or something like that. When the parents are queuing, he's gonna help them assist, so I appreciate them, you know, they could have dug in harder, and I appreciate them kind of coming to the table. It's, and I stress to them, a partnership with the schools is important to me and to the team and all of us, so, and I think the schools do appreciate that we went the extra mile for them.
Absolutely.
So, so this is just one piece of it. 9A, 9B is traffic study, so when I first got to town, probably around August, I had started this conversation with the schools, knowing that the project was coming up, and their timeline was kind of quickly shrinking for actually getting a long-term solution in, and so they brought in Denisco Design, who it was my understanding, if I'm understanding it correctly, was on board for when they originally laid out this site. So it's a familiar name, they're familiar with, with everything that's kind of out there and the way it is. We met them on site with the schools, some members of our public safety, and kind of laid out the issue that we had with them, just trying to find a way that's relatively low cost to address this. So the first thing that they're doing is some temporary and immediate work. The temporary work is going to be deliberately blocking spots in increments over a several week period to really tighten down how much parking they actually need there, so they'll pretty much keep systematically removing spots until they realize that people have nowhere to park anymore. So, all right, that's one way to do it. And then in terms of immediate work, they're talking about doing a phase one job this summer, which, which is, you know, honestly, low-cost solution to using the existing layout. It would include potentially moving the playground that's there to the back of the school and using that area to expand parking and more of a staging area to stack vehicles. I think on page eight of the report, you can kind of, they've highlighted a proposed traffic pattern.
And that was for the buses to turn around in that area also, right, Justin?
Correct, so, yeah, they're in blue. So what they're looking to do is implement that and see how it works, and if it works and it gets us by, well, then we'll continue until it doesn't work. But if they find that they've implemented it, that it eases things a little bit, but it's still really not working, they're going to continue the process and talk about a longer-term, more comprehensive, which we had talked about a little bit in the fall, either a loop going around the entire property behind the ball fields, or purchasing some of the land to the, the right of the entrance and using that, or using the, the strip of land and paving out an additional lane running along the rock wall at the edge of the property line. And so I appreciate that they added in this extra step in between, because if there is a more cost-effective way to do it, I'd rather do it for the cheap in a way that is safe and that works, than needlessly pay for this giant infrastructure upgrade that we don't need. So it's a little bit up in the air in terms of the exact direction it's gonna go, but I'll make sure, as the schools move along and communicate updates to me, that I will in turn communicate it to this body, because ultimately, if they do go forward with something that's a little more pricey, they're going to need funding for that, and it would be on an article for May, for work to be done in the summer, so I'll keep you posted.
Any, any questions on, on any of this?
I do not.
So this is pretty much a go, the interim measures and-
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great.
That's what we needed, you know?
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a little push, and, and we're all working on it together, and I think that's really helped too.
Okay. We have some license renewals to vote on.
Mr. Chair, can I add some, a late-breaking item to the list that's in your packet?
Yep.
So under the first category in your packet, which is on page 132, please add Farmer Browns to the common vic non-alcohol category, as, as of this afternoon, they had completed all the necessary items.
Paperwork and, and he paid the late fee, right?
Late fee, paperwork and inspection.
So that leaves two.
Sure does.
So will those two be shut down on January 1st?
So they, so we can shut down a liquor license holder, as we talked about last year, but we have no real means of closing someone for not getting their common vic, so they will be out of compliance with this body, they will have to pay the late fees, they will be getting follows-up with the inspeckional services and health departments, but this is where that area of common vic is a harder enforcement area for us, because we don't have, Justin nor I could go out and shut down a business on your behalf without a common vic. So we have an enforcement issue there, so we're gonna keep on them, because they need to be in compliance with building and health too.
But, yes, they have a common vic to prepare food. If it's expired, they don't have a common vic, so, so is that part of the business shut down?
We have no means of enforcing that. It's not like a liquor permit, where like automatically, like that's, the police can be notified, and they get, the door just shuts and they lock the door and they don't open.
Wouldn't have that.
Common vic, we don't-
That makes no sense, really.
It's because it's like a, it's not this, but it's kind of like thinking of a civil crime versus a criminal. Criminal would be more of liquor, like that, like is a hard and fast, you cannot open. Common vic is a little rougher. We're working with council, but there's not a lot in the statute. We're working on statutes that were developed in the 1600s.
Okay.
Yeah, is, can we add a condition on the license, that if you don't meet the renewal require, you are agreeing to be shut down?
I don't know legally, but it's a good question to ask.
Maybe you have new ones. What if they want to say, well, we're gonna go and clean our ovens, we're not gonna, just saying, right? It's not as easy as just turning on the, locking the door.
Yeah, and it's one of those-
Because they've got other things they could do.
Correct, and you can't, you know, one of the things that we came up last year, you know, if they didn't pass a building or fire inspection, those people have enforcement capacity, but a building commissioner cannot be ordered by this group to go close, like, it has to be that it's his, he's found a code violation to close them, same thing for fire. So we're gonna continue to work with the businesses, we're gonna continue to contact them. We've done remarkably better than last year, and I thank the board for that, as does Deb Moni in our office.
Good job, too, because that was, that was, that was a lot of time in there.
Hats off to the, to the office staff.
But it's frustrating.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, very frustrating.
And Deb will appreciate hearing you bring it up, because she's, she's frustrated, and I am too, so, but we did get one more today, which is good, and hopefully the last two will be on your January 9th agenda. We're much further than we were my first year, and much further than we were last year at this time, so it's appreciated.
And I have no, if you want to mention the two, I have no problem publicly, it's public record, but who are the two that, uh, have, I won't technically be in compliance on January 1st?
Charlie's Roast Beef and Freddie's Place.
Thanks. Okay, is there a motion?
And they were on the list last year, also.
And we've hand-delivered paperwork, so we're here, we're available. I will be in the office all next week to greet them and to assist them in any way we can.
Thank you for that, Jackie.
Yeah, there's no excuse, we'll, we'll be here. Somebody's, oh, Justin was in on Friday, some people picked up licenses. We're happy to, like-
We're a full-service office.
It's, we're not too big for the, handing out licenses.
Is there a motion to approve these? Is there a motion to approve these?
I'll move to approve all the license renewal on page 132 of the packet with the addition of Farmer Browns in the common vicular non-alcohol category.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to, this is a good one. We need to vote to accept a $393,000 complete street grant for the Boston Street sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
It is exciting. This is actually the third time this project has appeared on the agenda, but I've failed to get you to vote to accept the grant.
I was gonna say.
On every occasion. Yeah, so if, um.
I'll move to accept the grant before you keep talking.
We're voting tonight, and that's that.
And I'll move to.
Katrina's done too much hard work.
It's true.
I'll move to vote and accept the $393,035.48 complete street grants for the Boston Street sidewalks.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
Justin, mission accomplished.
Thank you, we got it there. I knew, I knew, very persistent, so. And this other one here, it actually forwarded to the board in September, but we haven't talked about it yet as an agenda item. So Katrina O'Leary, our planner, and Jackie had worked diligently to secure these funds. It's $25,000 through the Mass Development Program to pretty much take a look at the Memorial Hall parcel, because when the time comes for us to move out of there in a year and a half or two years, we want to make sure that we have a plan in place. We don't want to wait until we leave to say, all right, what are we gonna do with this thing? And so the purpose of this, and I'll let Jackie dig in a little deeper, but is to have a consultant come in and kind of take a look at that. So Jackie, if you'd like to talk about the steps a little bit?
Sure. So as the board will recall, we applied for three One Stop for Growth Grants last spring, and I thank all of you for your help and support when we applied, submitted those applications. You will recall that we already accepted the money for the zoning project that we're working on, the comprehensive zoning. So this is the second, so we did not get the third, which was for infrastructure that would assist us in the facilities project. But one of the ways that we needed to approach getting money for the facilities project was that it increases your eligibility for infrastructure money if you show ways that you're redeveloping existing sites in your community. And we have a perfect site for that type of grant in the case of the Memorial Hall property, because it is such a intricate, multifac, functioning space. There are so many constituencies. Not only do we have the footprint of our building and the parking lot, we have, as we've already talked about tonight, the Historic Cemetery that has been utilizing CPC funds. We have the CPC-funded trail that goes back towards 62 that a lot of people use. You'd be surprised actually how many people during the week utilize that trail for walking. And then we have the wider common and gazebo. So it is a really unique property. We've got playing fields, there's a lot of constituencies at play. This board has talked about ideas, you've had a brainstorming session, there's been a lot of discussion in the air. So the idea of this grant is that Mass Development has a group of contractors that they have available for these types of projects. They call them their house doctor contracts, and we would get paired with one of these groups. There's a company that recently did some work like this in Boxford that is gonna likely be our candidate. And they would come in and sit with the board at a public meeting and hear your feedback on what you'd like to see with the property. I'd provide them the notes from last November's brainstorming meeting that we had, and any other feedback that we have on the properties. And then these folks would put together a couple of different feasibility options for what to do, particularly with the building, but the site overall. And then this group would also be responsible, responsible for some significant public outreach, because I think we, the thing that we learned most during our brainstorming session last year was that this property, unlike our police department, which is very much commercially zoned, and I don't think any of us will truly miss it, and the fire department adjacent to the library campus has its own kind of unique story, this building has a lot of connections, it has a lot of constituencies. So in an effort for us to get some capacity to do that justice, this firm would come in, help us with the feasibility work, and then help us with some significant community outreach and significant public engagement on the three different feasibility strategies so that the board has a well-informed study about how to move forward. So this grant is 25,000 of technical assistance. It would require us to put forward 5,000 of our own dollars, but this was one of the things that when we talked in the spring about the 50,000 for the disposition of properties for the various tasks, Justin mentioned his update tonight, he's working on Locust Street. This is another use of that 50,000, but we do need the board's permission per the town meeting vote to assign 5,000 of that total to be our local match, which is a very competitive local match. It's not 50%, you know, 5,000 to the state's 25,000, I think is a really good ratio for us. So we would actually be moving forward with this rather quickly with a scope of work at one of your early January meetings, and they would do the feasibility work and the public engagement through this spring, and we would go into the new fiscal year with the final report in hand. So good timing in the sense that it then gives us another fiscal year to implement, to work through details, to work through funding, all of that. But at least by this summer, we'd have a straightforward plan.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah?
Yes. And I would just add one item to this as well, just to commend Jackie for identifying the firm she did. The fact that they did a job in Boxford and they have an understanding for the local flavor, I think is really important. Sometimes when you bring a consultant in from out of town, they just don't get it. And in the early conversations we have with these folks, it seems like they, they really kind of get it, which was nice. And then the other piece is how that parcel plays with the 40B project across the street. The timelines line up identically, and so when you're looking two, three, four years out from now, everything is gonna change there. And I think this, there's really an opportunity for this site to play against or with the site across the street and make it into something that people in this town really want to see. Huge opportunity there.
And the fact that that, that agency has worked in Boxford, and like you're saying, Justin, with the landscape of the communities, we're a dry town, so we're separate, but we're really kind of one, if you will. You know, we have different zip codes, but that's, you know, we share a lot of, a lot of everything, and always have. So I think it would be advantageous to have that same firm.
Is there a motion to accept it?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you for getting that, Jackie.
Mr. Chair, we also need a motion on, to utilize the 5,000 from the annual town meeting as the match.
Okay, is there a motion to add a fact?
Move, you authorize the use of 5,000 from the, the last ATM warrant article for 50,000 for this purpose.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Are there any updates or announcements from anybody?
Have we reminded people about the winter parking rules?
No, but we will, so thanks for the reminder.
Yeah, it's not very wintery yet, but they do go into effect December 1st, and I'm sure the PD is lenient when there is no stall.
Yeah, hard to enforce, but yeah.
It's worded as such.
We'll, we'll put a reminder on the website at least, so it's there and fresh in people's minds. But remember that it is, you know, should we have, when we do have it, it's gonna be, you know, we have had issues at, you know, town hall, parking lot, so please, you know,